We'll now call this regular workshop meeting of the Jacksonville City Council order. Council members, you have at your place a copy of the proposed agenda for tonight's workshop, and at this time, I would entertain a motion to adopt the agenda.
So moved.
Second. A motion and a second discussion. Gary Dunall in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Now, we have two topics tonight on the workshop. We have, first, we have the YMCA presentation. We have some folks here representing YMCA. They have come with us to share with us some information regarding the YMCA, hopefully trying to locate here in Jacksonville. And then we have the system development piece, which we'll discuss later in the later part of the workshop. But at this time, I'm going to turn it over, Mr. Sewell. I'm going to turn it over to Billy Sewell and your folks there from the Y to go ahead and do the presentation for us.
Mayor and council and staff, certainly thank you for the opportunity tonight to tell you about our New River YMCA endeavor and our opportunity that we have before us. And to my immediate left is Jessica Drake, who is our administrator and our facilitator, who has done a lot of the research and helped us bring all the information together that you'll see tonight that I think makes it real obvious for three large purposes of why will be a great attribute to Jacksonville and Onslow County. And then also, Dawn Rochelle will give us research and give us the findings throughout our six-month study that'll really tell the details of, about the YMCA. Most of you understand that the youth and family development, social and Christian responsibility, and healthy living are the three primary focuses and mission of the YMCA. And I think and will show that that is primarily parts and pieces that we will work to show you tonight through this information in the research and also in the findings nationally and how part of it works, can work in Onslow County through programming for opportunities for families and for young people. And we have several people that have helped us formulate with the founders group, and some of these folks are in our audience tonight, and thank you for being here. And they have given us their time as we've worked to put this information together. And from my conversations and then with Jessica and then with Dawn, we'll kind of bring this all together in the next few minutes. So with that, I'll turn that over to Jessica.
I want to talk a little bit about what a Y is because many people who have grown up here in Jacksonville, Onslow County, haven't had firsthand exposure. From where we sit tonight, the nearest Ys are in New Bern, Goldsboro, and Wilmington. And there is a lack of familiarity here with what a Y is. I wanted to start with the mission statement, with a mission to put Christian principles into practice through programs that build healthy spirit, mind, and body for all. Our impact is felt when an individual makes a healthy choice, when a mentor inspires a child, and when a community comes together for common good. You're going to hear a lot about community tonight because we kept hearing that as we went out into Onslow County and asked what the needs were here, people said, "We need help building a community." And that's one of the key missions of the Y is strengthening community. I myself am a Y kid. I grew up in Hampton Roads, Virginia, and my parents didn't have a lot in their background to teach them how to be good parents, but they knew they wanted to be. So they kind of looked around, and my dad was an enlisted airman stationed at Langley Air Force Base, and my mom was a stay-at-home mom, and they said, "What are the good parents doing?" Well, they were taking their kids to church. Okay, let's go to church. So Sunday morning, Sunday night, Wednesday night, we were at church. They looked around again and said, "Well, what else are the good families doing? They're going to the Y." So one of my earliest memories is playing T-ball on a YMCA sports league. My dad was my coach. I can't even imagine the frustration that must have been. He was a varsity college baseball player coaching T-ball. I can't even begin to imagine what his frustration must have been as we ran the wrong way on the bases. But that began a lifelong commitment from my father to his community through baseball. He ended up continuing on coaching in Little League all the way through into All-Star and state championship teams. But that was his way to give to the community, and it brought us together with our community. I benefited from that, and I want that for the families of Onslow County. The focus is, as Billy said, youth development, healthy living, and social responsibility. Those three legs of the stool, if you will, keep the Y in balance and engaged in the community. And dealing with numbers, the Ys are everywhere. So each little dot on this map shows you where there is a Y. They're in 10,000 communities, they have 22 members. They're in 120 countries worldwide. It's not just an American impact, it's throughout the world. And those numbers, I love that 600,000 volunteers. Ys are built on volunteers, and all the work you're going to see tonight has been put together by a volunteer founders committee. And this shows just the breadth of membership and engagement for a Y. It literally goes from birth to 90-plus. Members of the Y range all the demographics in age, in socioeconomic status, in race, because everyone is welcome at the Y. And it's a place for families to come together, it's a family, it's a place for the community to come together. As you can see, it's, the membership's half male, half female, but they're in 6,700 school sites across the country, and as many youth are involved as adults. In case you're wondering, here's your trivia for the evening. Y inventions, basketball, the USO, Father's Day. It's been impactful in its history and continues to be. So now, Dawn's going to share with you some of the research we did locally about what the Y could bring to Onslow County specifically.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you again for having us. And, you know, one of the things that I think most of you know that I am the head of a nonprofit, so when we think about bringing nonprofits to the community, I think that it's a daunting task, and it's one that I don't think anyone on the founders committee has taken lightly in terms of, does the need exist? And I think whenever we're looking to funders, whether they be private foundations or other investments of government money, we really have to look at the needs. And this group has been a working group, many of them that look around the room. So I am certainly sitting here representative of quite a few members who took a lot of time on the founders committee to go through this. So I get the fun task of sharing data with you tonight, okay? Because I'm going to walk you through. But one of the things that, from the very beginning, that was quite wonderful, given that this is a national model with a whole lot of years of experience, is that we really looked at this as a multi-pronged approach. I mean, all of you know, and many of you have been a part of, community assessments. And so it was very important to us that we looked to what other community assessments were done. But the YUSA does have a format that we were to follow as well to ensure consistency and really honestly, the credibility in the findings. And so what we looked at, okay, technologically, I mean-
Your head on the right leg.
Here you go, there you go.
Okay.
All right, there you go. I'm just going to know where I'm skilled and where I'm not. And so when we looked at sort of how we needed to even divide into the work that needed to be done, we had five working groups, and you see those on the page with you. And so for the facilities, we really wanted to create a summary of list of all spaces that already exist. Again, how do we leverage? And I think in Onslow County, we're really pretty good at that in looking at what we already have and what needs to be expanded upon. And we also wanted to look at, who do those facilities already serve? And then we wanted to look at groups and programs inventory. What did already exist in every facet of the community? What already existed for families and for children? We wanted to look for gaps, and we also, of course, wanted to look for collaborative opportunities if this was something that we were going to find definitely was a need and something we wanted to pursue. And then we wanted to talk with community leaders individually. We need to engage interest, which is part of why we're here tonight. We wanted to garner whether there was support for this project, and we wanted to ensure that the need is truly a viable need. We also needed to look at demographics and primary market analysis so that we could look at, so if this was something, did we need a place? Did we just need programs? Where was a viable place to put it? And you'll hear some of that tonight. And then we wanted, we really needed to, through a community needs assessment, which myself and General Dickerson were charged with, we really needed to look at, from actual residents in real time, what did they see were the needs? And so I'm going to start there with the community needs assessment. So in August of 2017, our group commissioned YUSA to study the compelling needs of their community in order to inform the program expansion plans. So an online survey instrument, not one that we created, but one that is used nationally for Ys, was distributed throughout the community to best identify the top community needs and the focus areas of youth development, healthy living, and social responsibility. And so we were going for 200 responses, and I always like to be an overachiever, but I think it far exceeded all of our expectations in that we received a total of 1,046 community members that responded to the survey. So we were really excited with those results. This response level equates to a 95% confidence level and a confidence interval of 3%. And everybody's like, "Okay, so what does that mean?" Everybody goes back in their research methods classes. But what it means is that we can speak tonight with 95% confidence that the stated results are within 3% of what is being reported. So I have to have some social math with that. So for instance, if 50% of respondents identified developed connections with others as a community need, they want to be more connected in the community, statistically, we can state with confidence that we are 95% sure that approximately 47% to 53% of the population would have answered the same. And again, those things are important. When you're looking at investing time and resources, we have to know that it's statistically valid information. And so for the survey methodology, and you've got some results here that I'll explain in a minute, but they, we needed to ask, the Y asked the questions in two ways. We asked the question in terms of how important is something, and then how satisfied are you with it? And so the topics that are both important and show signs of dissatisfaction are then as identified as the need, if you will. And this is what this shows on an X and Y axis. And so the chart breaks out the needs by their level of importance and dissatisfaction, giving you greater insight into why each received the percentage that it did. It enables you to see which needs are more important versus which needs have a higher dissatisfaction with the current offerings in the community. So the three highest, if you can kind of see over to the right and up to the top, it's hard without a pointer here, you can see that the availability of services aimed at engaging the family unit, that was the one that was identified with the greatest level importance within the survey. And you're going to hear that echoed over and over and over. People were looking, especially for adults, are looking for things to do to engage the entire family unit. And that, I don't think, is a new concept in this community. I think that's a lens that we've looked at implementing a lot of services across a lot of agencies. So, and what we also did then is we had where, in the survey, where people could click on what they thought in a Likert scale in terms of whether they were satisfied or not satisfied, et cetera. But we also looked at, we went through and did a qualitative analysis looking at the words. We wanted to see what were the words that were most commonly used and how many pages?
110.
110 pages.
Of individually single-spaced typed responses.
Yes. So with that, we have a word generator. And so you can see, of course, when you do these wordles, as they're called, you can see that the words that are the most prevalent are adults, activities, family, community, place. That's what it does. So we looked at sort of the quantitative using the Likert scale information, and then we looked at the qualitative. My research professors would be very excited right now. I can still remember some of those. So then when we looked at, and then when we looked at the needs of youth, so this is, again, it looks kind of the same, honestly. A lot of it sort of mirrored. But again, you look at the level of importance and dissatisfaction, which gives you the perceived need. And so for our youth in our community, it was, safety and security came up over and over and over again in adult and youth, but it seemed to be a little bit more prevalent for youth. They wanted somewhere that was safe and secure, and they wanted to have a convenient access to structured activities in a community facility. They also wanted availability of non-athletic programs that draw out youth skills, creativity, and confidence, which we were all really kind of, it was great to see. You know, there's, there has to be a breadth of things for children, no matter what their interests are. So again, we did a wordle, and you can see, as I said, safe places, activities, community, youth need, teens, positive. And again, this was the qualitative piece of the responses to the survey. So then we took that information, and we needed to validate it in forums. And again, we were very pleased with the number of folks. Many of you are here in the room tonight. 135 stakeholders were invited and 85 attended, and it was very much a cross-section of the community that were there. And what we needed to do, of course, as you can see on the screen, is we just needed to hear feedback. Like, given what this data shows, is this your perception? And we, of course, have lots of breakout information on this, but over and over, you could see for adults and families and youth and teens, the information married the information and the online results. So we also needed to look at some individual focus groups of anywhere from, I would say, on average, I would say 15 attended the three focus groups that we had. And again, whenever you go on the venture of community focus groups, you're never sure. But again, when people heard that we wanted to discuss our findings in the Y, it was interesting how many people showed up for me, having done community forums in the past. And so we particularly looked at the groups that are on the screen here, minority male, millennials, and middle to low-income families, because when the Y helped us to assess the respondents to the online survey, we felt like there were some areas that were underrepresented, and we wanted to ensure that we reached out specifically to ensure that we had a comprehensive look at the entire community. And so, again, we heard consistently that we needed to have, and I'll go ahead and forward through the next one, sorry. Thank you. Thank you. We needed to have a convenient access to structured activities and secure places in order to reduce the social isolation, to actively engage with each other, with the own family and community. And I think one of the things in particular, one of the groups that, the groups that I led of families that represented families that economically were struggling, if you will. And it was so interesting because it echoed some observations I think all of us have, that in a day and age where we feel like we're the most connected, many times, we are seeing a lot of social isolation and a lot of people feeling less connected. And some of that is, you know, a lot of people assume that there's a lot of connection via the internet, but what we're finding is people really want the human connection, and they want that place where they can go that is a national brand, if you will, and they recognize the Y. We were talking in a meeting just a few days ago that the one thing that is wonderful about this area, and we heard this echoed in these community forums, is that there is a lot of exposure already to what a Y is. And so having a lot of people, what I heard in our, my group in particular, was that we assumed that there would have been a Y here. We don't understand why Jacksonville doesn't have a Y or Onslow County doesn't have a Y because we could need it based on prior experience in other communities. So the other consistent need that we saw was a convenient access, and again, to the structured activities, but it was to engage the entire family in a safe place. So it's a little bit different in terms of the reason, but safety, and we said, we're a military community, there's a high expectation of safety and security that exists, and it came out, especially in the wordle, if you will, that there be a safe place. And again, a place for fellowship, if you wanted to summarize it. And then the last slide on consistent need was a place to engage the family in healthy habits. That came up, and I was pleasantly pleased to see that there was a real focus on reducing the rising chronic disease rates, address the needs of aging, and help education without stigma, that it was a place or a program where if someone could walk in, and it was regardless of whether a person could pay or not, is the way that I understand that people answer that question. And so one of the things that I would want to know, if I were sitting in your seat, given that, you know, this went out, this was Onslow County, but this went out, I'd want to know how many answered in the zip codes that are primarily of Jacksonville. That's what I would want to know. And so we also did a zip code analysis regarding the needs, and across all the zip codes, the availability of services aimed at engaging the entire family unit, safe and secure community spaces for adults, and adults having convenient access to structured activities in a community facility rank among the top three needs. For youth across all zip codes, safe and secure community spaces for our youth ranks among the top three needs, and that youth have convenient access to structured activities is the top need for zip code areas 4046 and 539. And then the availability of non-athletic programs that draw out youth skills, creativity, and confidence is also a top need for zip code areas 4046 and 539. In terms of how many in the survey responded from the 40 and 46 zip codes, the, there was 58%, so of the 1,046, 58% came from the zip codes of 40 and 46. And most respondents lived within an 11- to 20-minute drive from the Jacksonville Parkway. So just to kind of give you a little bit of idea, we tried to tease this apart every which way that we could for a lot of different reasons. So now that we've identified and I've shared with you some of the needs, we wanted to look at where that we could sort of meet, like, so if we could pick anywhere, where would it seem to meet the greatest need in terms of visibility, access, and affordability from what families were saying to us? So with this, hello, we are looking for, and I'll have Jessica to chime in here as well, and we have some other members who worked on this with us as well here. So in terms of the demographic mapping from the center of populations, one of our members, Steve Wangren, actually, who just came in, I think, kind of noticed that if the population center that's at the bottom with the red ring, so if you look at mapping the population, it draws the center to outside of the gate, thereby Piney Green, Midway Park, it's got Tarawa Terrace, but that includes the base population and the barracks. So when you take that out, it moves the population center, as you can see, to you-
Gun Branch and Western.
Thank you. Gun Branch and Western. I still need MapQuest, so. So it moves between Gun Branch and Western. So we needed to look at that. And so then, but however, when we move that center to downtown Jacksonville, because again, we're looking at drive times of where we feel like need is, and that opens up the reach to reaching almost all of Richlands to Swansboro, all of Lejeune and New River Housing, and out Burgal Highway and 17. There's, there's very much a center that's located not far from here for the entire population to be served based on the demographics that we have. Anything that you would add to that?
That's right. That squiggly line just gives you an estimation of a 12-minute drive time. The YMCA has found that that's about the optimal maximum amount of drive time to a location, and so that purple squiggly line just shows you an estimated 12-minute drive time to the center.
Which is one of the reasons why we're here this evening. Billy?
The next, the next steps, and that's part of why we're here tonight, when looking at the demographic studies and knowing where the center is, it goes back to downtown Jacksonville. And, and I'm going to kind of back into this, but formerly, we are asking that you would become a partner with us and lease 159 Cheney Avenue to us, what some of us who grow up here is the LA&amp;B Tire Store building, because we feel comfortable that these different opportunities, whether it's New Bridge Middle, or it's the city park further down the Kerr Street, or it's Clyde Irwin, they're close prox, this is in close proximity to opportunities that we have in new form partnerships. Steve Myers, representing Onslow County Schools, who's here with us tonight, and we see a great potential opportunity to be able to form these programs and services and weekend activities, and the school system would certainly be a partner with us. So we foresee that that building is a great opportunity for us because the drive time activities, the location of facilities, and how you can get to this location pretty easy from the bypass and the park. So, but based off our next steps, and that, we have a 450-page document that has created the request for a charter, which will be a branch of Twin Rivers YMCA. Todd Stewart, if you will stand up. Todd will be our partner and our mentor. He's the president and CEO of the Twin Rivers YMCA. So there's only been one or two cases in the country in the last 20 years where they gave a community a Y without a partner. And in this step, in this case, I feel that to get off the ground and do it correctly and make sure that we're in a great building block process, that's why we want to partner with the New Bern YMCA and Twin Rivers, and we will be a branch of the Twin Rivers. And next week, on the 24th, we will present to their board of directors. Once they vote on it in February, it will then go to Chicago to the YMCA USA Board and then voted on that. So we hope to have all our formal requests and approvals by the end of March. Part of the other process that we recognize that we will need to do is the endeavor for a million-dollar campaign, because part of the request for a YMCA to become approved is you've got to have money in the bank so that you can afford the programming, afford to hire one to two people initially. And so that's part of our endeavor through the founders group this year, through, I think, probably the second and the third quarter, will be our push to ask individuals and institutions to write a check for a three- to a five-year campaign for up to or more than a million dollars. And I can stand here today and tell you as the leader of this group that if the city will come forth and be a partner with that, with us, I will not ask you to monetarily put in any money. So I will not even be that bold, because you will more than get us off the ground and start, because this building will give us a lot of opportunity with young people, with adults, with seniors, with families, in a seven-day activity that will be able to make great differences in our community, that I think we all know that we have some needs, that we can help our, our community and our family atmosphere in Jacksonville and Onslow with a YMCA. And with that, I will ask for, we have a video that we would like to show you, and then I would, we would like to entertain any questions that you have.
It's what this country is made of. A helping hand, a shoulder to lean on. Us is all of us. Different looks, different voices.
Hello.
One sacred bond. But right now, that bond is framed. Where do we find common ground? How do we get back to us? The Y fills the gaps and bridges our divides. It's a place where we can- It's a place where we can become us again. Now, more than ever, the Y needs your support, because where there's a Y, there's an us. For a better us, donate to your local Y today.
Sir, you're open for questions now. I'll start it off. You mentioned that about the building. Now, you've gone down, and apparently, somebody's gone down there and looked at that building and location and all, right?
Just from the outside.
Just from the outside. There, I think what's in there now is just some equipment that we've staged there.
General storage.
General storage. You realize that it was a tire garage, or was it kind of a garage setting, and you have noticed that the parking is limited around there?
We've had a conversation with the Catholic Church behind that building, so we're working to create a partnership there, and we've had initial conversations, so I don't think parking would be a problem.
And the other thing was the outfit of the building. I'm sure that if the council were to grant your request there, it would have to be some kind of outfit for, to make it util, you know, be able to be used by, for your purposes.
We know that we will have to pass city code and inspections, so, and that's part of the endeavor to raise the million dollars, so that part of those monies will be used, because we foresee classrooms, or foresee a small amount of offices, and general programming space. So, yes, sir.
That's all the questions I have. Anybody?
Just, did I understand you say you wanted to lease or buy?
We would like to lease. We'd rather lease.
And you mentioned it, but primarily, you would use the building for, just, that's going to be your initial base, or?
In the first three to five years, to get our start, and to build the YMCA name, and to build the brand in Jacksonville and Onslow County, we know, and we've seen through other experiences, that we need a building that we can work out of, and that we can have an opportunity, that if I go to a benefactor, and I say, "We'd like you to donate money for this Y cause," if I can show him a building that we're going to put the money towards, and we're going to be doing these programmings, that, okay, Friday night at 6:00, we're having youth development, and we're having an adult activity, that we can bring this whole family unit together, we've got a better opportunity to create the Y, and to build on that brand.
Other questions?
Would this take away from some of the Recreation Department programs?
We do not think so, because in our initial assessment, we see that there are needs from weekend activities, and after-school programs, and potential partnerships with the Boys and the Girls Club, and we would like to potentially form a collaboration with the city, so that we're not walking on your threshold of activities that you already do. I think there's enough to do in these other areas, that, because I don't foresee a basketball league, I don't foresee a baseball league. I think youth development and programs will fill our agendas for the first two to three years. When we did the initial needs assessment, if you think of that 12-mile, 12-minute drive time, you've got a half a dozen gyms with spin and yoga, but that does not address the need with young people that have issues and opportunities. And, you know, one of my initial conversations with Chief Yunero, I said, "Chief, what would a Y mean to Jacksonville and Onslow?" He said that it would mean that I would not be as busy on a Friday and Saturday night getting youth off the streets. Maybe some of these activities for young people could formulate what they could see and do for themselves and with their families, that I wouldn't be dealing with burglaries or mischief or other issues. So, and that's just a small piece that I mentioned, but with 26,000 students in these schools, plus what's on the base, and 70% live in the community, amongst 190-plus-thousand people in our county, I think we've got a lot of opportunity to bring services that will be well-received by our community. And the average, Dawn mentioned this in small detail, the average community assessment is 300 to 400 in the replies. We were in the top five in the country in the last 20-year history, with 1,046 replies of, "We think a Y would be good in Jacksonville."
Yeah, what I would also add, too, is that we did have a working group, again, that really looked at and mapped the services that were already being done. And I would say, I see all the city emails, and the city has a very robust Parks and Recreation Department, and so, all of those services and program titles and everything that we could do, we've mapped all of that out. And so, obviously, if that's a need that's already being met, that's not something that we would do. We're looking at the gaps, and obvious, I mean, to us at least, and by national and people that looked at this, there's still, obviously, a need for family engagement and social activities. And I think, again, working in human services and seeing the needs continue to rise, a YMCA adds to the protective factors of a community. And when we look at issues such as domestic violence, child abuse, opioid issues, all those things that continue to come before council and the county commissioners, a Y adds to the protective factors within a community of having another prong approach to be able to provide support for families. And so, again, we did, it's a great question, because we absolutely looked at what the services there were already here.
Will you offer scholarships or some type of, for low-income families?
That's part of a YMCA endeavor on an annual basis, to have an annual fundraiser for scholarships for the needs of families. They'll pay a portion, what that is is going to be needs-based and income-based, but yes, sir.
Billy, this seems like a, if I may say, a modest first step. What's the plans after three years?
That's, conservatively, that's going to depend on how well we do, what we think we can do in the first three to five years. The goal, if I backed up and said utopia, that you've got a larger facility, that you've got some type of bigger facility for activities as well as programming. You know, if you didn't talk about cost, you would say, "Would a pool be a good idea?" And I think it, and everybody, and Todd in New Bern's got an indoor and an outdoor, but it's kind of like Dean Smith Center, it operates at an operating loss. So, I'm not into that activity to begin with, so I want to build the brand and prove to Jacksonville and Onslow County that we are a worthy organization, providing good services to the community, and then let the next steps come. But to your point, yes, that's the ultimate idea. I saw today Calgary, Canada just opened the world's largest YMCA at 385,000 square feet at $200 million, paid for by the city of Calgary, so I look forward to a future partnership with the city.
With Calgary?
Well, but I think, too, the fact that we're being shepherded, if you will, by the Twin Rivers YMCA, I think, too, that, you know, obviously, and the Y National, they have a lot more years of experience in terms of next steps, and so, I think all of us have some level of comfort, knowing that there are people who can guide us and can give us, sort of, given this, what might be your next steps, based on historical experience in other communities.
And I think it's fair, probably, to add, Billy, that, you know, some of us that have been around for a little while, we tried this years ago, at a much larger scale, and, you know, we weren't able to move it forward, and now, we realize that, as you all know, it's no secret I'm part of the founders group, because I believe in the Y, but we decided to start small and grow, and this is the right way to do it, because this way, we can make it a reality, because it's a great addition to any community, and it's proven valuable in hundreds of others. This would be a great first step, it'll be a great addition to the community, and I think that in terms of programming, you know, there's a lot of non-athletic programming that we'll be able to offer, that, you know, you have a huge maker movement, that, you know, this community really doesn't have access to, or our children don't have access to, in terms of robotics and science programs, and 3D printing, and just so many other activities that we discussed at some of our meetings. It's not always athletics, it's that family programming that's really important to a community, and it's just another tool, as I see it, in the toolbox, in a community, that gives people an opportunity to find something that they're interested in, and if you can save a life, you know, you've done something as a community, and I think that's important, and that's an important tool to have in your toolbox, and it's a great first step for us. You know, I fully support it.
Yes, Mr. Carter, you see any legal obstacles in terms of leasing, or?
As I understood from reading the paper this weekend, they were asking for a five-year lease, which would not make it subject to any kind of upset bid process. I think we could certainly look at that, if that's the period of time, and work toward, they're going to, I'm sure, want to walk the building, get some kind of cost from the inspections department, et cetera, and so forth, but we could certainly begin the conversation.
Well, council, are you comfortable with moving forward and having staff to work with the Y representatives, and look at that building, and maybe negotiate in some type of lease for them to use that building?
I am.
I'm assuming that the building, we don't have a strong need, we could, I mean, we offered it to the museum before, so I'm assuming that we don't have a compelling need for the building at this point?
We have a need for the building, but anytime you can take a building that's in a central location and have a higher use, it benefits the community. Now, we do have storage, we'll just figure out where we put the storage. I mean, to keep that building in storage, if there's a higher use, would not be a correct thing to do. If it is the council's direction, then what I'll ask the deputy manager, Ron Massey, to do is to lead a study that analyzes with this group the issues of the building itself. One of the things that we all know is the state building code is going to tell us what we have to do. I have no idea whether to change the occupancy from what it has been to what it could become is going to require a sprinkler system. If it does, that's significant money. But these are the type of things that, if council would like to have us investigate, I believe tonight you're giving a nod, that you would like to see this building put into this use on a temporary basis. And what I'll ask Ron to do is to lead the staff analysis, to bring back to both groups all of the facts, because at this point, if I may use the term, you're discussing a brown bag on the outside, and you're not sure whether it has pizza on the inside or something else. Did I say that correctly, sir?
Over there's pizza inside.
I've got my pizza socks on, so hopefully, that's not loose.
Let's go that route, if that's all right with the rest of the council.
And just a thought, Dick, please stand, Dick Jones represents the Wilmington YMCA, and he's already got a program in town for the last five years or so with Girls on the Run and the Stride Program that happens every spring, and there's also a summer camp at Camp Kirkwood, that military veterans' children attended, that was managed through the YMCA. So, the Girls on the Run is over five to seven years old, and has grown tremendously, so, and those are just an example of two programs, and Dick has had great conversations with us, that after we're up and running, that if we want to take that on, then he's happy to do that, or at a minimum, partner, so. But, thank you, I appreciate the opportunity, and we look forward to working with you going forward.
One thing, from a time standpoint, I believe that we can have our work back to you within 30 days, maybe another joint session to review all the data, if that's acceptable, that will be our goal. Okay, thank you.
Very good.
Thank you very much for coming tonight.
Thank you so much.
Very informative. And those of you that came in support of the YMCA, if you would stand up, I just want to show a level of support that we have in our community, and all of these folks are, or most of them are involved with our founders group, and all different folks from different facets and civic leaders in our community, so thank you, and we look forward to the next steps. Thank you.
Can you take a five-minute recess for the next hour?
Stand, we sit.[1551.42]
So, if you can go back in session, we're going to go to item number two, which is the system development fees, and I'll turn it over to you, Dr. Witterford, at this time.
Thank you very much, Mayor, members of council. We also have several members of the Water and Sewer Advisory Committee. We appreciate them being with us this evening. As you're going to hear tonight, due to changes in the state law, the city is required to make certain changes relative to what we have historically called our facility fees. By state law, they're now called system development fees. State law required us to hire a consultant to do the work, that way guaranteeing that it was objective and at arm's length. This evening, I'm going to ask Wally and representatives from StanTech, who is the consultant who did this work, to review this with you. At the end, we're not asking you to adopt anything, rather, we're asking you to concur in a process that will move us forward to future adoption. So, Wally, if you would.
Good evening, Mayor, council. To my right is Mr. David Hyder. He's with StanTech. He is the consultant that assisted us with the analysis and work for the system development fees. Tonight, we're going to give you a background of kind of how we got here, what the requirements are for House Bill 436, which put system development fees in place, the methodology...There's actually three methodologies that we'll go over, the methods for calculating the fee, and then we'll go over the analysis that's required and give you the results and some recommendations. And then, at the end, we'll kind of go over what our next steps are. So, House Bill 436 established system development fees and gave municipalities the authority to charge fees for impacts to water and sewer systems created by developments, new growth. It states that these fees can be used to fund water and sewer improvements that are necessitated by the development, and then it establishes methods for calculating the fee and what the fee can be spent on. So, as part of that legislation, they actually said that you have to do a supporting analysis that tells you...that analyzes your system and determines how you calculate the fee. There's a 45-day public comment period built into the legislation. On top of that, there's a public hearing, and the way we've looked at that is those are two separate pieces. So, we would have the public comment session, have time to make any changes necessary to the supporting analysis or the calculations, hold a public hearing, do the same thing, and then it would move forward for consideration by council and possible adoption. The state law for the system...the supporting analysis for the system development fees has to be prepared by a financial professional or a PE or engineer that has, and it specifically states that has experience in setting fees or rates. This is language straight from the law. It says that the methods used in the analysis must be generally accepted accounting, engineering, and planning methodologies. It states that the fee can look at capital improvement projects, not less than a 10-year horizon, but not more than 20. So, basically, a 10- to 20-year horizon. And if you'll think about, in the past, the city's had a five-year capital improvement plan. As we move forward with the next budget, we will actually be presenting you a 10-year capital improvement plan. The good thing is the city has multiple engineering analysis and master plans that we have identified project based on growth, and I know that you've seen some of those presentations on where we think the city is growing, and we've done the analysis required to support those developments with water for water and sewer. So, that's largely where that next five years of a capital improvement plan will come from. It's projects we've already identified, but because we had a five-year time horizon, we had never included into our capital improvement plan. And the analysis will basically set the maximum that we could charge for a fee. Obviously, if council decided to charge something less, you're able to do that, but the analysis says that this is the absolute maximum you can charge because that's what your information supports. And then, lastly, there is a requirement for a credit of 25% built into the legislation. And I'm going to let David talk to you a little bit more about that. There's essentially three methods, and David's going to...I'll go over them quickly because David's going to give you more information on this, a little in more detail, but basically, the three methods are a buy-in method, an incremental or marginal expansion, or a combination of those two. Buy-in is basically where, if a developer were going to build a piece of property, A would come in and pay a fee that's based on capacity you have already built into your system. An example of that is our land treatment system. We did an expansion. We expanded from 6 million gallons capacity to 9 million gallons capacity. So, we built 3 million gallons of capacity into that plant. Well, we've already built it. We're already paying debt service on that investment. So, in that scenario, a developer will be buying into our system. It's something that we've already paid for. Incremental or marginal are those projects that are in our capital improvement plan that we have not yet built. So, they're planned. We're going to move forward with those projects, but we have not yet constructed them. And then, the combination is obviously the same. It's a combination of the two. So, you're including those projects you've already constructed, along with those projects that you plan to construct. And then, it states what's allowable for expenditures, and it...essentially, it says it depends upon the method used. If it's the buy-in method, it's for previous improvements. If it's for...if it's the incremental method, then really, the money that's brought in by those fees has to be spent on those capital projects that fund growth-related capacity or additional capacity in your system. And then, those would be our capital projects, those that are identified in our capital improvement plan that add additional capacity in our system. And just to take that one step farther, you'll see on the slide, we talk about enhancement projects. If you'll remember, we just redid Henderson Drive Lift Station. As an example, if that lift station were replaced, and it was a million gallons per day capacity, and we replaced it with a million gallons per day capacity, then that would be funded by rates, the monthly water and sewer fees that people pay. If we built additional capacity into that station, for example, we took that station, expanded it to 1.3 million gallons a day, we could actually recover the additional cost for that $300,000...300,000 gallons through our system development fees. So, we enhanced that station. Now, I'm going to turn it over to David to kind of walk you through the supporting analysis that we did. He's going to give you a little bit more on the history of the law. He's actually...I'll let you explain this, but he actually helped write the AWWA manual on some of this, so with that, I'll turn it over to David.
All right. Well, good evening, council, mayor. It's a pleasure to be here. I am going to go over a little bit of background and what Wally's alluding to in terms of I'm on the American Water Works Association's Rates and Charges Committee, and as part of that, we help update the M1 manual, which is a manual of practice for setting rates, fees, and charges, and I was one of the contributing authors to the system development fee chapter. So, a lot of the legislation that was...that's included in the legislation of House Bill 436 is based upon the system development fee chapter within the M1 manual. So, it's a lot of the basis there. So, just a little bit of background in terms of what system development fees are. Essentially, it's the fees that you charge when somebody joins the system, and ideally, those fees recover the cost of providing the capacity that you either built for them in the past or you're going to build for them in the future. So, the idea is that they allow you to have growth, pay for growth. It's the essential idea behind them. As Wally's mentioned, the new North Carolina statute was passed in July of 2017. That's really the impetus for this study. In terms of what the requirements for the House Bill 436 include in terms of the fee calculation, Wally's gone over the three methodologies that are included in the law, and I'll talk about them more in a minute. But as part of this, it just needs to be a detailed analysis that documents all the facts and data that was used in the analysis. You need to document these, document the assumptions, any limiting conditions that you're assuming in terms of the calculations of the fee. The fees need to be calculated on a per-service unit basis for new development. I'll talk about that more in a moment, but you're essentially coming up with a unit cost of capacity in the system development fee. Wally alluded to the fact that you have to have a credit included in the calculation of at least 25% of the aggregate cost of the system. And then, also, you need to look, if you're going to look at the...either the incremental method or the combined method, you need to look forward over a 10- to 20-year planning period. So, when we look at the three methodologies, Wally went over this in a good amount of detail, but the first methodology is the buy-in method. And essentially, under this methodology, the basis that you're using to come up with the cost for the fee is the historical investments that you've made in the system. So, the fee is based on what you've constructed today. The legislation requires that those fees that you collect from this, if you use this methodology, can only be used for capital in terms of rehab of the system or expansion. So, there's quite a wide...there's a lot of leeway in terms of the way that you can use the revenues if you use the buy-in approach. This approach is typically used for a system that has ample capacity in the existing system, so you're not planning on expanding it significantly. There's plenty of capacity to sell. So, that approach would typically be used for a community like that. Kind of the converse take on this would be the incremental approach, which looks just going forward at future investments, so it doesn't take into account the investments that you've made. It purely looks at the CIP and says, okay, what investments are we making? It purely looks at the CIP and says, okay, what investments are we making going forward? And the legislation requires here that the revenues that you collect under this methodology can only be used for expansion-related projects. So you couldn't use this methodology and use those revenues to pay for rehab of these existing system. You can only use it for expansion-related costs. And this approach is typically used for a system that has very little or no capacity in the existing system. So you're out of capacity to sell. You basically have to construct capacity to serve growth in the system. And the final method is the combined approach, which takes your historical investments in the system plus your growth-related capital, combines them together. The revenues under this approach are only used, can only be used for expansion-related capital projects. So you can't use them for rehab of the existing system. And to be honest, this is by far the most common approach. Most systems are in a situation where they have capacity to sell and they're expanding the system. This is definitely the case in Jacksonville. So we're recommending that you use the combined approach, and that's the methodology that we've used in terms of calculating the system development fees. So in terms of the actual calculation of the fees, fairly simple here. The system development fee is based upon the value of the system minus the credit, that's our numerator. And then our denominator is the system capacity, because we're looking at coming up with a unit cost of capacity in the system development fee. So the components of the system, the value of the system, the way that you calculate that, because we're using the combined approach, we take the depreciated value of the existing system. We bring that up using an index to current replacement cost. And then we add to that the planned capital projects for growth. So the combination of those two give us our value of the system. So it's really kind of an average value of the system. You have historical investments plus what you have going forward. And then from that, we subtract out the credit, which is the outstanding principle on existing debt for the utility system. So those are the investments you've made. Some of them you're still financing, so we take out that principal. That's the credit. And then we divide that by the system capacity, and that's represented by equivalent residential units, which is our unit of setting the fee essentially. So we look at the capacity of the system in EDUs, as they're typically termed.
Why EDU instead of ERUs?
ERU often gets confused with stormwater. Yeah, with a runoff unit. So typically, EDUs is more common.
Which on the planned capital growth, so you got a 10- to 20-year horizon. What'd we use, 10 years?
We used 10 years.
We used a 10-year. And that credit is not the same as the credit with that 25% that Wally was talking about a little earlier.
It is.
What is that?
Yes. Yep. And so I'll show you here in a second as we look at, well, I'm going to talk about the credit. So the basis for the credit, while the legislation does require that 25, at least 25% credit be provided on the total value of the system, that's actually very customary. It's typically, a credit is provided within a system development fee calculation. And the reason for that is because when you have a new connection join the system, when they start paying their user rates, they're going to be paying for the retirement of that debt through their user rate. So when they pay the ongoing water and sewer rates, they're retiring that debt. And so if we take that principal out of the system development fee, we remove that double cost recovery. Because if we don't, then they're essentially paying for those assets twice. They're paying for them in the system development fee as well as in their water and sewer rates. As I mentioned, the House Bill 436 does require at least a credit of 25%. When we look at the debt service that you have on your water and sewer systems, they represent over 25% of the value of the system. So that credit is satisfied. And as I mentioned, this approach does line up with the American Waterworks Association. They talk about providing a debt credit. It's customarily done. So in terms of the actual calculation for the water system, we have the calculated value of the water system, which again, this is the historical investments plus the growth capital. That comes together to be $70.5 million for the water system. Your outstanding debt service on the water system is $17.6 million. And then your system capacity, represented in the, in the treatment plant capacity, actually, it's your permitted well capacity, is 7 million gallons per day, which equates to 19,444 EDUs in the system. So the calculation basically is as simple as taking the 70 million minus the credit. We divide that by the 19,444, and that gives us our charged system development fee of $2,799 per EDU.
Per unit.
Per unit. Yes, correct.
Remember, here the word "unit" is not equated to residential unit. It's unit of calculation.
Correct. And then on the sewer side, the value of the sewer system, 140 million, 140.8 million. You have a lot of, significant amount of outstanding debt on the sewer side, $50 million. The plant capacity on the sewer side is 10 million gallons per day, which equates to 20, almost 28,000 EDUs. So our calculation turns out to be a sewer system development fee of $3,366 per EDU.
And remember, the 10 million gallons is a combination of the 9 million out at Land App and the 1 million that we have at the base. Because I know when I first saw this, I said, and I said, well, remember, you got two locations for providing treatments. That's how you get the 10 million.
Yep, correct. So the next obvious question is, how does this compare to your current fees? So right now, if we look at your, and I see a typo there, it should say SDF per EDU up at the top. Essentially, we want to talk about EDUs. You can see the existing SDF for the water system at $2,119. So we're calculating a fee that is $680 more than the current water system development fee. And on the sewer side, we're calculating a fee that's $433 less than the current system development fee per EDU. So the numbers come out fairly close, but a little bit higher on water, a little bit lower on sewer in terms of the calculations.
Can we just explain the EDU so that people know? Because when you think of it, you think of per residence.
Okay, let me explain it this way. If you're dealing with dwelling units, and everybody lives in a single-family home, you can be considered as one unit. On the other hand, because you deal with different-sized water meters, you can't use the old thought of dwelling units. As you'll see in a moment, a 5/8-inch water meter versus a half-inch or 1-inch or 1 1/2 or 2-inch or 4-inch. So they're all based on the concept of what is the smallest unit? And that's the EDU. So what you'll find, and I don't actually know the numbers, but they will show you in a minute, the larger your meter, the more EDUs you are having to pay for, for your shop. So for example, if you're in a retail store, you're going to use very little water. If you're in a laundromat, you're going to use a lot of water. And so it is a factor of water consumption and water meter size. But David?
Yep. You've, thank you. You've laid it out very well. That's exactly right. So what you typically do is you calculate that per-unit of capacity, which we're saying is an EDU. And an EDU in this instance would be equivalent to a 5/8-inch meter, which is a typical meter size for a single-family home. And then what you typically do is you scale that based upon meter size. And the American Waterworks Association has meter equivalents, which scale by meter size. So essentially, what this is saying is that for a 4-inch meter, that's representative of 25 EDUs or 25 single-family homes, essentially. And so right now, your sewer SDF schedule does scale by these AWWA meter equivalents. So you're consistent there. Your water system development fees don't scale quite by that, by this AWWA meter equivalence. And the basis is a little bit unclear in terms of how that, they were derived in the last study. But we are recommending that going forward, you move to bringing both water and sewer to the American Waterworks Association meter equivalents when you scale the system development fees. So what that looks like here, here's your water fees by meter size. So again, they're scaled based upon the equivalent, equivalents provided from AWWA. You can see your current system development fees, the calculated system development fees, and then the variance. So remember, 5/8 is 1 EDU. We talked about that, $680 more. As you scale up, because the American Waterworks Association's equivalents are higher than the ones that you're currently using, the differentials actually get bigger as you go up by meter size. So if you did have a customer with a 4-inch meter, which is pretty rare to see, the difference would be pretty substantial.
2-inch for a commercial development is not rare. I mean, that's pretty common, so. What's hotels generally used? Do you remember?
I think there's some on too much, aren't there? I can't, I can't think of any 4-inch. We may have one or two. I know the hospital's a 6-inch, but I think most of our hotels are on 2s.
Yeah, and I guess the, essentially, the issue in not scaling them using those equivalents would be that essentially, you're not capturing the equivalent capacity that they can use. So somebody that has a 4-inch meter can use a lot of water compared to somebody that has a 5/8. And that's the reason for scaling them, that is, it's that representative capacity that you're buying in the system. So if I have a 4-inch meter, I can use a lot of water. Now, on the sewer side, it's a little bit more straightforward. As I mentioned, they do currently scale based upon the American Waterworks Association's equivalents. So the calculated fee, again, for a 5/8-inch meter, 1 EDU is going down $433, what we've calculated. And then as you go on up, you can see the calculated fees in comparison to your current fees on the sewer side. And then customarily, when somebody joins the system, they're going to pay both a water and a sewer system development fee. So this gives you a sense for the combination of both the water and sewer. And because of the fact that the water fee is going, we've calculated is higher than the current fee, the total variance is higher for the combined by meter size.
Now, before you leave that, if you, we'll go back in just a second. These represent the maximum fee that you can charge under the law. They are not the required fee. If you choose at a later date to adopt this schedule, you're in compliance with the law. If you choose at a later date to have any number higher than what this calculation shows, you would not be in compliance with the law. If you chose to scale some of these numbers lower, you would still be in compliance with the law. This sets the maximum. The other thing that we want to stress, none of this has anything to do with any of our existing customers. This study is not about your monthly rate. This is not about your fair user fee. This is about the system development fees charged for new growth. So let me give you a quick example. You live in a single-family home. You can go to bed tonight and forget all this. It doesn't impact you. You own a vacant lot. You want to build a new house on that vacant lot. Yes, it impacts you. If you're a current merchant and you're running a shop, it does not impact you. But let's say you decide to double the size of your shop and you need more water. Then you're going from 1 meter size to a higher, it will impact you. But again, most of the citizens who are watching us on G10 tonight, this does not impact you because we're not talking about your monthly water and sewer bills.
Correct. Yep. That's a great summary. These are just the maximum calculated fees.
David, you mentioned that our sewer is compatible with the AWW standards, but our water's not. When is the appropriate time to make that adjustment? We're certainly talking about a rate study this year also. Should it be done while we're in the process of doing this, or what's your thought?
Yeah, it would be appropriate to do it now. Essentially, you're, you're right sizing the ship, I would say, in terms of you're calculating the fees at the maximum defensible level, consistent with the, what the state is requiring. And then you're proportioning them based upon the potential demand that somebody can place in the system when they buy in at a certain meter size. So it would be an appropriate time to do it. I would say the only, the only way that these can impact your existing customers is if, if you decided to adopt fees at lesser than these rates, you potentially don't generate as much revenue from new connections. And therefore, it is a enterprise fund, so they, you would have to find those funds somewhere else. But again, it's a great summary. This is essentially the maximum amount that you could charge. Okay?
What is the, I'm a little confused. You mentioned that the system development fee would be applicable in terms of rehabilitation of the line?
Yeah, not under the approach that we're recommending.
Not under the approach.
Correct. The limitation is if you use the buy-in approach, which is just looking at your historical investments and basing the fee just on your historical investments, then there's looser standards in terms of what you can use the proceeds for. You can use them to rehab a line. You can use them to replace a line. But when you bring in the prospective spending, the capital improvement plan, then the House bill says, no, you can't. You can no longer use it for repair and replacement. It has to only be used for growth-related capital.
Well, what about the situation where the city has under design, what do we call that, the Northwest sewer line?
Yes, sir.
One of the purposes of that line is to provide redundancy. The other main line to the land application goes under the river. So they have some thought that we need the redundancy by having another rot. But I guess part of that reason would be to provide capacity for possible growth.
Yes, sir.
Now, how would you calculate what is increasing capacity as opposed to just providing redundancy?
Can I answer that one? Yes, go. I'll answer that one specifically because we've talked about it a lot of times. That one is, that project is actually creating additional capacity in our system. Even if we remove, when that project is finished, if we move forward with it, the, we can direct, we would direct Carolina Forest Pump Station, along with others, into that project. But what it will do for us is free up existing capacity in some of our existing system. And namely, the trunk sewer that runs from the Commons to Henderson Pump Station, that's, that's where one of our largest constrictions is for the Henderson Basin. So if we divert 200,000 gallons, obviously, it would be much more than that. But if we divert 200,000 gallons, we would be able to put an additional 200,000 gallons through that existing basin. The redundancy actually would not come until a later project because there would be no way to tie the main pump station and this new pump station together through this project. So that would be a future project that, for calculation purposes, we did not include in. So this would, the project that's currently designed is not a redundancy. Now, the great thing is, should something happen through, on our 36-inch force main or at our main pump station, not 100% of the city's wastewater would be going through that station at that point. So it does help in being able to handle the situation, but we won't have true redundancy built in. That project would have to be constructed at a later date. There would be nothing tying the two together.
What would you do, probably off-base, but what would you do in case of major rupture on the 36-inch trunk line?
Dig a really big containment basin. We have a plan in place, but essentially, that's what we would have to do.
We understood that project to be one project. This is the first that I've heard that it was a split project.
Now, the initial phase does not include a connection between the main pump station and the Northwest trunk sewer.
Remember, that project is actually made up of five different projects.
That's correct.
But for this presentation, what I'd like to do, we will bring you more information to show how we believe that project meets the combined definition.
Yes.
But it is correct, Dave, that when you all calculated it, you looked at the way the city was building that project, and you believe that it does qualify to be included in the combined fee.
Yep.
Well, it's also true that the reason for that specific project was the pressure that we had.
That's right.
In the Henderson Pump Station, if you recall, with the growth of Carolina Forest and the size of the
That's correct.
That main, it was having a lot of pressure, and that was the primary, really, the primary person. And subsequently, we figured out we can have some redundancy as part of that project.
Yeah, but those other problems could have been remedied by replacing lines. Yeah, but those other problems could have been remedied by replacing lines and origin pumps.
I don't think so.
We're, we're actually at either your next meeting or the following. I think it's the following, actually.
Second meeting in February.
We're going to bring you the follow-up to Greg's presentation on how we would handle some of those challenges if we did not move forward with the Northwest Regional Pump Station project. So we will bring, be bringing you that. You're correct. You either, we, if we're going to grow in that area, and it's not just Henderson, it's also Brookview, we're going to have, we will have to do something. So we either make major investment in our existing system all along the way, and Greg will highlight some of those, or we build essentially what he's called all along the bypass, that will take it around our existing system and straight out to our land app.
Wally, a number of years ago, when we changed our, whatever, the system impact fees, you know, what we call now, we had a study.
Yes, sir.
That calculated the maximum, I guess, justifiable rate that you would charge. What's changed here? Because why did we miss the mark?
I'll tell you what. What has really changed is the fact that there were no standards, and what we did that study on was five years. You know, what we're now required by state law is we have to look at a minimum of 10 years. When we talked to Dave and the folks at STANTEC, we looked originally at the full 20 years. I'm going to tell you, if you, if you included everything for the next 20 years, your impact fees would be through the roof. Now, the other side of the state law says this, not only do you have to look for a minimum of 10 years, which is what these fees recommend or are based on, but you have to update this every five years. So this is not, you know, every five years, we're going to have to hire another consultant. And I don't mean that in a negative way. I think Dave's done a great job. But by state law, you have to hire an independent consultant every five years to update this. And it's really, nobody really missed anything. It's just the fact that what went into the formulas to establish the rate, those were different parameters than what goes into this. Now, Dave, you looked at it, am I explaining it correctly?
Yeah, you're absolutely right. You're absolutely right in terms of, you know, prior to this, this House bill, it was pretty loose in terms of how you could calculate them. And it wasn't, we didn't see anything glaring in the last study. It's just that this provides a very prescriptive, you know, explicit way that you have to go about doing it. And, yeah, exactly. I, I'm a little bit surprised that the House bill required, says that you can go up 20 years, because that's a little bit unusual in terms of industry practice. Typically, you'd look at like a 10-year window. That was one of the areas that we were a bit surprised about, but.
I'm surprised they allowed us just five years between updating, because obviously, the, the numerator is going to be the biggest change, you know, as you
Right.
Depending on if you have a, one year with a real big capital improvement, that actually will, will skew the whole thing. You know, that thing almost assumes that you're spending the same amount of monies over a five-year, I mean, they, they take the total fi, take it, the total and divide by five and just smooth it out, but you could have a project in that six-year that would be way above the average that you, you wouldn't get a chance to, to, to use for a while if, if you, if you don't do it every year. I'm surprised they don't require us to, to look at that every year and, and calculate it.
Yeah, I guess because, because it does look out over a 10- to 20-year period, that gives some, some smoothing in the historical investments that you've made.
And then you're paying, you're paying debt down every year, too.
Correct, that's right.
So.
Yep. Okay, so just a couple more slides. Wally alluded to some of these, some of the procedural requirements in terms of the fees. So we're going to give you a report. That report needs to be made public for a 45-day period, at which time the public can submit comments. And then we need to consider, both the consultant as well as the city need to consider those comments, make any adjustments, any changes. And then there would be a public hearing on the system development fees, and then, as was mentioned, you need to update them at least every five years, the requirements. So turn it back over to Wally.
Sure. So moving forward, we've discussed the supporting analysis, and you've seen the fee calculation tonight. STANTEC needs some time to actually publish the report so that we can put it out for comment, so we plan to get that out in February for public comment. And then that will start our 45-day comment period, which puts us somewhere in April, but the idea would be that we're aiming for a public hearing in April, April, at your 17th meeting, because that's a regularly scheduled council meeting that we have public comment at. And then for council consideration at your May 15th, which is another regularly scheduled 7 o'clock formal meeting.
And what you'll actually see is, instead of a 45-day comment period, that, you know, I won't do the math in public, especially since you get it, but that's more like a 63-day period. So we're well within the law.
Yes. And again, the idea would be that we receive comments from that public comment period, make any necessary adjustments, and then go back for a public hearing so that we have time to hear any, any other comments and time to make changes before council adopts it. So we're not going to move forward with a public hearing and council adoption on the same night. That way, if, if you hear anything, you can give us feedback as well. So for tonight, what we're looking for is a recommendation for moving forward. As STANTEC has mentioned, they, they recommend that we move forward with method three, which is that combined method. And Dave can correct me if I'm wrong, but essentially, we have a significant investment in our existing system, and we have a robust CIP, Capital Improvement Plan, that identifies projects that we're going to need for growth. So the combined method really does fit the city of Jacksonville. And then we would look for your support on the proposed schedule that we've laid out on the previous slide.
And Wally, it's fair to say that when you talk about growth, you're talking about our existing footprint without the ability to expand.
That's correct.
Anybody have any problem with us moving forward with combined?
I think if we could get a motion in second, because this is part of the record that's going to be required if someone came to challenge us, if you wouldn't mind.
So let's get a motion then. I'll make a motion that we adopt the combined calculation and improve the proposed schedule. Second. No motion second. Any other comments? Fall in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
We have one part of the law, you know, every time that you read any law, you, you see things in it. John brought to my attention today, and this is, you know, not something that STANTEC was asked to look at at all. If you remember the Carthage case, which started this whole thing, part of it was the fact that the city of Carthage was requiring payment of the water and sewer impact fee at the time the subdivision was platted. What the city of Jacksonville currently does is we tie that to the building permit. And based upon direction and authorization that y'all gave several months ago, we've even moved it from the building permit further into the process where you do this now
Prior to final inspection.
Prior to final inspection. But I want you to, to listen as John reads to you what the law now says we're going to have to do regarding collecting fees.
For new development involving the subdivision of land, comma, the system development fee shall be collected by a local government unit either at the time of plant recordation or when water or sewer for the subdivision or other development is committed by the local government unit, period. For all other new development, comma, the local government unit shall collect the system development fee at the time of application for connection of the individual unit of development to the services, to the service or facility.
Isn't that contradictory completely?
Well, when John read that to me this morning, I said, well, you know, now, as I interpret it, and I'm not the lawyer here, we have a handsome lawyer next to me. That's, goes 100% to, 180 degrees opposite of what the court ruled in the Carthage case. We're going to make, with your approval, we're going to make contact with Senator Brown and say, y'all may need to go back and amend this, because for a residential subdivision, and let's divide this, that versus a commercial. A residential subdivision, we're, you know, let's say you're building 100 lots. This says, you'll either pay it at the time of plant 100 lots, or you'll pay it at the time we turn the water on to the subdivision. There could be no houses out there at all, and that subdivider is suddenly going to have to write us a handsome check. Now, for commercial, it's a little different. You usually don't deal with subdivisions. You deal with individual parcels. So in that case, we believe that if there's a new commercial building going in, we could still charge this system development fee at the time the building permit's issued.
Or the time of application, or connection of the individual. Now, if, at the time you come in and
And the, the next one says that this article, this statute shall be narrowly construed to ensure that system development fees do not unduly burden new development.
That's all contradictory.
But again, we'll make some inquiries with Senator Brown and see if there's anything further.
Anybody got anything else?
I would just say that the way that you do it is customary around the United States to do with the building permit. I think there's going to be a tremendous amount of backlash on that throughout the state.
I would like to publicly commend the staff and STANTEC for the work. With your approval this evening, we will go ahead and begin to disseminate the information and follow the schedule.
Okay.
Appreciate it. Does this apply to all, all water systems? All public utilities, all?
It's now one law that applies to every purveyor in the state of North Carolina, whether it's a regional, county, municipal.
You're saying it does?
Yes, sir.
Even on Wassa.
Private?
You sure?
They got to go to Utilities Commission to get there.
Yeah, it does not apply to private utilities.
But it does apply to regional, like on Wassa.
But yeah, a public, like on Wassa, KFC or any
But any, any public it does, but any private, they, they have a different.
Correct.
Scientific, I guess, would be private.
What we did, all they had to do was change the name.
I'm sorry, say it again?
Wassa. All they had to do was change the name.
Yeah, still a public authority. If anybody else has anything else, let's entertain a motion during the workshop.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Yeah?